This is a public here. Y'all hear me? This is gonna be a public here. This is the hospital, your hospital. Board, and we're giving you an opportunity to freshen thoughts and concerns in regard to future of Williams Hospital Healthcare Franklin County. I'm real simple, so I've got simple rules. There'll be no personal attacks, there'll be no profanity, or unseeming language. You're allowed four minutes to say what you need to say. At the end of four minutes, Heather will indicate to me that your time is up, and I'll ask you to cease. Does everybody understand? Everybody's happy? If you have a question, give it to Heather, write it down, give it to Heather, and we'll get you the information in a timely manner, make sure you put contact information on the paper. And with that, we shall get started. We'll start. Mr. Bean, when you get to the podium, state your name and who y'all.
Good evening, Mason Dean, Franklin County. Hey, listen, I just want to set another ground rule, is that we don't have differences of opinion, but we're all on the same team here. We're after affordable, best healthcare we can get in Franklin County. And no matter what happens, and on what side of the fence we're on, I hope we can always be friends. That's everybody out here, because that's important in a small community. And you've all heard, part of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and expecting different results. I think with the Alliance presentation, nothing changes. I think we remain the same, except now we're paying a management fee. I think Sacred Heart coming in here can offer not only more affordable healthcare, if they're strong enough when equipment breaks, they can staff it with doctors, and I hope that you all will. Certainly endorse Sacred Heart, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Next, step forward.
Hi, as you know, I'm Donna Butterfield. As everybody knows me, I'm for Sacred Heart. But I've been very confused all of a sudden. This is the contract that Alliance offers us with the services they want to provide, the costs associated, and a signature page if you want to actually sign the contract. Nowhere in this contract is there an endorsement or a provision in writing from Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. And now, all of a sudden, it used to be Alliance/TMH, it's turned to the ad that you all put in the paper, now emphasizes Tallahassee Memorial slash Alliance. Now you're passing out information that's comparing Tallahassee Memorial, their services, and their dollars. Do we have an offer in writing from Tallahassee Memorial to provide all the services that you've listed on this spreadsheet, which is at best misleading, and at worst maybe fraudulent? Why are you trying to sway anybody in the audience in the community who may not be aware of services for hospitals in the county? You're saying Williams, Ascension, and Tallahassee Memorial. Do we have a contract now pending with TMH? Why change from Alliance to comparing everybody to TMH? They're not gonna come in here and provide you services. I don't understand what you're trying to do, and I think it's incredibly dishonest and misleading. Apples and apples, don't throw TMH in here because they don't care. They're not gonna do anything unless you can prove me wrong, and I hope you can.
Next. We want to solve our trouble holding this meeting like we're here for somebody.
I'm Carol Blaskin, I live on Center Street in Appalachia Cola, and I have a question which I didn't have when I got here, but why would we be interested in aligning ourselves with Sacred Heart Hospital on the Gulf when they're showing a, they're in the red, by $4,087,096, $9,066, June 30, 2018? I mean, we can go in dead on our own, because we're having a terrible time getting a hospital going, so why would we allow someone that's in the red with that much to take over our hospital? Also, I have concerns about the fact that we have a lot of people that go to our hospital here and to the clinic here that don't have any vehicles, so they walk, or they ride bicycles, or they take those carts, and we need to keep that in mind. We need to keep our treatment local unless we're gonna provide some kind of bus service for them, you know, kind of shuttle or whatever, to go to any kind of health facility that's not on our campus where our campus is right now. Thank you so much.
I'm Tommy Luster. I've lived here 54 years, and I know my difference still, and I try not to get in the way of the local activities and the local ways that things have been run for years. They've worked well. Years ago, our hospital went into a contract with a management company, and they ended up managing Williams and St. Joe. And at the end of the five-year contract, when they just abruptly left town, a lot of our equipment was gone, and it was in St. Joe. I don't understand why we would want to go through that again. There's, the main question here is, if, are you gonna, are you gonna go to St. Joe for medical, or are you gonna go to Tallahassee? If you, especially if you live on the east side of the county. It's closer to you to go to Tallahassee than it is to go to Panama City, which is the first thing St. Joe's gonna end up doing. The main body of the question I've got, it strikes me, is, are the people that live here gonna use and support the hospital that's here? I, like I said, I moved here in '62, and in '63 I was in that hospital for a week. This hospital. And since I've gotten older, I've been in there a whole lot more. I've been in there for eight years, pneumonia, accident with my table saw, and took seven stitches. But I use that hospital, and if the people of Franklin County will use that hospital, it could support itself. Thank you.
Next, step forward.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Susan Leach. I am a resident of Franklin County. I'm a nurse practitioner. In the past, I've worked at Williams, and I've also worked as a physician over in Carabelle. I also have a history of working with two rural hospitals, both of which ended up closing. One, prior to closing, did go with a larger facility, and many, many, many promises were made, I guess they weren't in writing because none of them occurred, and the hospital closed within three years. I was here the day that Sacred Heart did their presentation. I was not here for Alliance, but I did read that presentation, and red flags and bells went out all over the place because I've heard those same things, and they didn't, they didn't come to be. One of the things that Sacred Heart had said was a commitment, willing to do the number they threw out, I believe was a 20-year commitment, that says to me they're not going to use things and then toss us aside. I wholeheartedly support Sacred Heart and would like to see that occur here. Thank you.
My name is Galfrana Parmenes, I live in Carabelle. I have used Williams. I've also been hospitalized in a number of states, in Catholic hospitals, Baptist hospitals, for-profit hospitals, nonprofit hospitals. A previous speaker noted that Sacred Heart, in Port St. Joe, was running a deficit, and has for several years. If you do a little research, you'll find that the Sacred Heart system has a history of supporting rural healthcare, especially in indigent areas, which we certainly are, and that they use their income from more profitable urban hospitals to support those rural hospitals. They do not expect to make a profit, or even run even, shall we say, or break even, in these rural places. That is part of their mission, and because they are very specific, we need to take them seriously. The Alliance presentation was full of, "We'll give you advice, we'll probably have a connection with TMH, they might wanna use this hospital as a swing bed facility." Well, they could've been using Williams as a swing bed facility all this time, and it didn't happen. So, I don't know why it would magically happen now. Because I live in Carabelle, I would very much like to see any new facility be located more centrally, so that there is less temptation to drive to Tallahassee for all the medical care. However, your comparison of one element of the Sacred Heart system, one hospital in the Sacred Heart system, with TMH, which is a massive urban hospital, is truly unfair. Also, I want to mention that on your paper, you say that Williams offers medical and surgical care. Now, I know we're tough in this county, but you don't have anesthesiology care. I don't know how many people want to go to surgery without anesthesiology, or how many surgeries have been done at Williams, but I'd like to know. Thank you.
Next. We'll give you that.
Hi, my name's Jeannie, I work at the hospital in radiology. I've been there for 15 years, give or take a couple months. Got a wonderful staff throughout the hospital. Yes, we're small, we're rural, we're not bright and shiny, but I can tell you there have been many times where we have saved lives. We've given great news, we've given sad news, we've given horrific news. There's been times we could not save a life. It wasn't from lack of trying, because I can tell you right now, a bigger facility, TMH, Sacred Heart, anybody else would've said, "They're done." We fought for those people, we tried. I can tell you right now, we're, we're small, we've got old equipment, some of it, we've got a lot of new equipment. It's not bright and shiny, I'll say that again, but that equipment does exactly what other people's equipment does. And anybody who wants to say different, go right on ahead, because we use it, we know it, and the people that we save with it can tell you the same. Taking away, taking this hospital away from this community is gonna put so many lives in danger. We, there's times when somebody's got, they're not feeling well, they come to the hospital because maybe their wife and I's had them a little bit too much, and within 15 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes of being there, they crash. Thank God, Williams was there, because if they'd've waited on an ambulance to take them to Sacred Heart, or TMH, or Panama, they would've died. So, if you're willing to put your friends, family, the visitors that come here only because we have that hospital, the ones that have the families, the ones that have the sick children or sick parents, and they bring them to St. George for that last visit, or just a visit, they do their research, they see what we have here, and it's a hospital, and it's within just a few miles, a few minutes, and so they choose Appalachia because of that hospital. So, if you take away the hospital, and I believe if you put it to Sacred Heart, it will be gone within two years at most. I truly believe that, nobody can tell me different. So, you know, if you do that, you're gonna lose so much. You're gonna lose money, you're gonna lose the families that would eventually move here. I moved here because of this community. I love this community, I wouldn't work anywhere else. I don't care what kind of atmosphere, or equipment, or anything like that, I'm here. I love this community, I love the people, and you just, don't take it away, don't give it away, because if you let Sacred Heart come in, you're giving it away. Thank you.
My name is George Coon, I live in Appalachia Cola. I moved here 10 years ago. Williams, I want Williams to stay here as a fully operational hospital. I've saved my life three times, and for that, I'm extremely grateful. It's my understanding that it's a critical access hospital, and that the license is something that Ascension would be very happy to get, and it would leave Williams with nothing, and it would be turned into doctors' offices, or beauty parlors, or something else. So, I'm worried about it leaving. And I am, I was looking at the numbers here, and Sacred Heart is losing money, and it has been for four years, and I'm concerned that whoever planned it and designed it, why didn't that come into the picture at the time? Sacred Heart would also benefit by recommending its own other hospitals in Panama City, and I think that's one of the strong ideas for taking the critical access hospital away from Appalachia Cola. I'm for keeping it here. Thank you.
Next.
I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Williams Hospital.
Name your name, bud.
My name's Curtis Allen, I lived here, I got four kids, I always took them to Tallahassee, and I wouldn't stand here today if it wasn't for me, Williams Memorial brought me back to life. If y'all take Williams out of here and let money-hungry somebody else come in here just for money, y'all not smarter than I thought y'all were.
Eric.
Good evening, my name is Suzie Strickland, and I am also in support of Williams. My good friend has been in the hospital for six months at Williams, and this staff has done a remarkable job taking care of her, and exhausting every avenue that they could to place her and care for her and do whatever needs to be done. I would be scared to death to imagine what would happen to our elders, our people with dementia, our people with handicaps, our people that are indigent, our people with no transportation, as someone had talked about. What would happen to those folks locally if we didn't have a place where they could be and get care? We've also been in and out of the emergency room on numerous occasions over the last 30 years that we've been in this area, and having a local hospital is very, very important to this community, to the residents and the visitors that come to St. George and that come to the area. Having to go all the way to Port St. Joe for hospital care makes no sense whatsoever in a thriving community that we have here in Appalachia Cola and in the center of Franklin County. So, I support a decision to keep Williams in this area and keep the staff doing what they do best. I also have a question, I wonder if anyone's done an impact study looking at the domino effect of what would happen to our staff and our community if the hospital was taken away and gets moved elsewhere? Thank you.
Next.
So, this is some, I live in East Point, and I've lived here since 1985. I'm well acquainted with Williams Hospital. My mother was there, my husband was there, I've been there, and gotten very good treatment. I'd like to go to what the two things are that we're talking about. The Alliance, the first thing that, as I look through pages of what they're talking about, the first thing I saw that really stood out is they said, "Once a deal was signed, then Alliance would do a thorough review of the facility, within two months, and then schedule a board retreat." So, you've signed a deal, and now you, if you sign the deal, I believe that means you're locked into it, and then they go ahead and do it. And I look over here at Sacred Heart, and at one point, Sacred Heart has already studied what is going on in the panhandle. I know they're over in Pensacola, I know they're in Fort Walton, and they are in Port St. Joe, and that's the panhandle, they know that rural part, and I believe can handle it. Now, I personally went to Sacred Heart when I had to have a knee replacement. I didn't have to go up to Tallahassee. I've been up to Tallahassee for surgery, fortunately had somebody that could drive me, and I just went to Williams, and, oh, not Williams, but Sacred Heart in Port St. Joe, and when the doctor knew I lived alone, he said, "Okay, we'll put you into the swing bed, you can spend more time there, get your therapy, and then go home." I didn't find that a problem at all, I found the care also to be very, to be very good. I've looked at the Alliance proposal, and I see, I see a lot of words, I don't see facts of what they are going to do. I look at Sacred Heart's proposal, and I see that they're gonna do this, this, this. They are gonna put the money in to buy the needed equipment. I had an x-ray done a couple years ago, and from that x-ray, it said I had to have these two tests taken, an x-ray at Williams Hospital, said I had to have these two tests taken. And I went and had those two tests taken, and the result was, there was nothing there. So, I don't understand why an x-ray machine at Williams tells, tells my doctor that, "Oh, she's got a problem here." I went up to Tallahassee Memorial and the other places that I needed the test of, and nothing was there. So, I'd like to see upgraded equipment, and that's what Sacred Heart says that they're going to do. So, I'm looking at it, not, not the standpoint that Williams has been, has been great for the community, and it has, and again, I've been there, and the service has been great, but from the standpoint of we have this group saying they're gonna do something, and this group saying they're gonna do something, and from this group, the Alliance group, I don't see the things being done that need to be done in Franklin County. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrice Willier.
Hold on just a second. If you folks standing on the side wall, move up, people in the foyer out there can come in, and they can hear better. And there is seats available, y'all tighten up a little bit.
Patrice Willier.
Oh, no, no, I'm good, I'm good.
I'm gonna try not to knock it over.
Greg, get out of the way.
Hello.
How are you, bud?
Thank you, sir.
Hello, can you hear me? We good?
Go ahead.
Okay. Again, my name is Patrice Willier. First thing I need to say is that I wouldn't have my husband with me here today if Williams was not here. I'm grateful for that. And I think there's a lot of people in this community that feel the same way I do, and I've been in the same position I've been, and if Williams was not there, my husband stepped into the hospital, and his heart stopped immediately. They got him going in one shot, run to Tallahassee Memorial Hospital on a Friday afternoon, and with the great care he was given from Williams, from the doctors at TMH ER, he survived that. He was brought home with me in the car on Monday morning, and we looked at each other and couldn't believe that that could just happen. But the great care he received at Williams was the reason he's still here with us. The impact of whatever's gonna happen, especially I believe with Sacred Heart, is that we're gonna lose jobs, first of all, that's a given. I think a lot of people are moving here, we can see people buying houses in Appalachia all the time, they go like that. People are coming here because it's a great community, beautiful water, beautiful food, beautiful people. I think one of the things people are looking for is good healthcare, and the fact that you can be within a couple of miles of a hospital, and ER especially, that's what we need, is an ER for critical care. We have all kinds of care that comes through there, maybe not some critical, but there's a lot of that, and we need to keep that ER there and open. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that Sacred Heart only wants critical access, they want our money, and that's it. TMH, I think, is trying to reach out to the smaller communities and bring their knowledge and their money and their benefits to us. And I think we need to keep Williams right where it is, we need to build that new hospital that we all pay taxes for. We've been paying those taxes since 2012, we need to utilize that money, just like we built the clinic in Carabelle, like we're supposed to, now it's, we're supposed to build that hospital, and I think we need to go do that. That's all I have to say.
Take you, Green Day.
Hi, my name is Laura Weinance, and I live in Lanark Village. I'm a registered nurse since 1981. I worked at TMH for 15 years. I think it would be a huge mistake to turn our back on TMH. They have all kinds of resources, they are excellent facility, they are reaching out to the communities all around Tallahassee, it's not just the city. I think that they could do a lot to enhance our healthcare here. I think we'd all be a lot safer, a lot healthier, and I think it would be a great asset.
My name is Kaylee Mears, I have lived here my entire life. My niece was saved by the hospital, she went and had a peanut allergy that we didn't realize. When you have kids, those minutes of driving is effectively life or death, I mean, not just kids, for adults too, I mean, allergic reaction, they were able to get to the hospital quickly. That long drive to St. Joe, it's really not that long, but it is when it's a life or death situation. But I just want to go back to the statement that was made earlier, that said, the surgical care, that there was not anesthesiologists, and who wants to have surgery without anesthesia? I am living proof that you can have a surgery without anesthesia. Having my child four years ago, I had a C-section and cardiac care without any anesthesia. In emergency situations, you do emergency things, and that is having surgical care without anesthesia. I am in support of Williams, I support their hospitals, and I support their staff. Thank you.
Flip Butler. I'm Flip Butler from East Point. I've lived here since 1977, and since about 1980, went and opened a branch in Appalachia, and thanks to a former board member, worked for me. I've kind of watched the hospital, attended meetings, attended county physician meetings, have been a great supporter of Williams Hospital, in fact, I'm still treasurer of their foundation. And I've never thought I'd hear myself saying this, but I think at some time, you reach a point where you need to cut your losses and do something different. We've been associated with TMH for, I don't know, 10, 15, 20 years, what have they done for us? As I understand it now, we're not really dealing with TMH, but another organization called Alliance, that the CEO of Tallahassee Memorial knows. There's many factors, I keep hearing. Yes, Williams has been great, I've had family members out there, my stepmother died out there, my father was out there, I've been out there, my daughter's been out there, and it's always had great treatment. But can we afford the overhead of running a hospital with an average patient count right now of about one? right now of about one? Uh, I keep hearing, well, when we have a new hospital, they will come. Well, doctors admit patients to hospitals. We've not had very good success in recruiting doctors. What's going to change with that? I mean, I've been, where we were trying to recruit a person born and raised in Franklin County who was a doctor. Other places offer them, "We'll build an office for you, we'll build a home for you, we'll give you this." Our county commission without even reimbursed a doctor for his travel expenses, that's why I read the paper was correct. Uh, I just don't think, well, let me rephrase that. I think we need somebody running a hospital to do those type of run a hospital. I just don't have the confidence, and our county commission, with everything else they got to do, to also be running a hospital. Uh, another factor, uh, they said the hospital will pay for it, except through the depreciation. Well, they're playing with numbers. Uh, as I understand it, in their figures, they're using something other than double, uh, double depreciation, double-
Double declining.
Double declining depreciation, which means you take twice as much upfront. So, yes, we'll have the cash flow to pay for a hospital for the first so many years, but once you reach a point, the depreciation will be going down, how we would pay for it, our taxes, our healthcare tax. Uh, there's just so many things that I, I think we need to look at it. TMH and their programs have had many years to, to fix our problems, and, uh, everything I've seen from Sacred Heart looks very positive. And if we don't work with them, they will probably cannibalize whatever we have here. I know for a fact, they have been looking at locations in East Point and St. George Island. They're going to bring facilities here, and they will slowly develop a customer base. Uh, I never thought I would be using Sacred Heart, and I have. Uh, a, as we go forward, they will be referring people from their offices to their hospital. And I've heard many people say, [bleep], that Weems saved their family member's life. Well, was that Weems Hospital, or was that the emergency room? Because we're not talking about doing away with an emergency room here, we're talking about doing away with full fed hospital. What I really think we need to be talking Sacred Heart about is a first-class ER with so many swing beds or transition beds. But it is very convenient, I agree, to be able to have a family member in a hospital here in the county that has to drive to Tallahassee. I did that for months when my father was up there, and by the way, he came from Weems. They could not get him in a TMH. She had to go to Tallahassee Community Hospital for this great relationship.
Next.
David Atherton, we have lots of times. I don't have a comment, but I just want to make a suggestion. They're both, Alliant and Sacred Heart, when they gave their proposals, said, "Oh, yeah, we don't do ambulance, we'll think about that." I think the, it would be wise to address, when you make your decisions, the future of the ambulance service. People care about the ambulance service, and it's an essential part of the question. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Flowers, and I'm a resident of Franklin County. We are talking about a county hospital here, not an Apalachicola hospital, but a county hospital. I think if we go and build a hospital, it needs to be centrally located in the county. My opinion is, we cannot afford to build a hospital. We need an emergency room centrally located in the counties. And the proposal that Sacred Heart has, they are willing to staff it, they are willing to supply it, and with technology changing like it is every day, they're willing to bring in new equipment. Weems has been a great place, great employees, and you know, as I do, the housing problem in Franklin County, I really feel that Weems will be hiring the staff out. I, I feel that Sacred Heart will be hiring our staff out of Weems, because we have no place to put anybody to bring them in. If they need training, I feel that Sacred Heart will train them if they need training. Um, I feel like, Cliff, it's time for us to cut our loss and go forward in a positive way for Franklin County. Thank you.
Uh, I moved to Franklin County three years ago for the express purpose of working at Weems. I am a nurse at the hospital. I personally disagree with both plans. I don't think Alliant gives us enough detail, it's way too broad. Uh, I strongly disagree with Sacred Heart's plan for the express purpose of they're basically saying, "Go ahead and build a new building, and then pay us $500,000 a month to occupy it." If we have $500,000 a month to pay-
A year.
Uh, newspapers in a month?
A year.
Okay. That changes it a little bit. Eight percent a month, right across. The bottom line is, I don't think we're going to get the services that we're told we're going to get. A lot of the services that are claimed to be available at Sacred Heart actually come out of Panama City. They come over once a week to do a consult. They're not going to have those services in the hospital or in the emergency room. I think if we go down to just a standalone emergency center, we're going to close. We're going to be throwing good money after bad. And we need to look at it on broader spectrum. Majority of our people of this county are not represented in this meeting tonight, and that is our poverty-stricken people, which is what we need to look at serving, because that is a big part of our community. And when we send all of our resources out of county, they are going to lose, and it's only going to make our county worse off. Thank you.
Well, you'll be, you'll be next, okay? You go ahead, I think that she can be next.
First, I want to say thank you to you all. I understand what it means to be a board member in a hospital. I've done it. I know what you are responsible for, I know what the state of Florida obligates you to, and having a deemed status with the federal Medicare program makes you responsible even for more, so that when things happen, like when the state of Florida comes in and deems you not to be meeting state standards, the ball goes to your part. You become responsible. I appreciate that. It's not easy, and it's an ever-expanding, growing list of duties that you are legally obligated to fulfill in order to have a hospital license. I also want to thank the employees here. No one here talking tonight should be making anything, any kind of indictment against the staff at the hospital. The reality is, the discussion about, I mean, good staff, right? Good people? I would expect that they save lives, I would expect all hospitals to save lives. So it's not about that. I just want to say thank you for what you've done. The financials are inaccurate, perhaps duplicitous in their tone. I would expect the hospital, and I think I'm the only one in the room that's run an individual hospital and a system for 30 years, a hospital system for 30 years. I would expect the financials at Port St. Joe to be in the red. They're a startup organization, they're spending a tremendous amount of money a year on new equipment, they're bringing in new doctors, and I realize the hospital board in the past has made a recommendation to the county commission to bring in new doctors, and it's been turned down. But when you start up new physicians and have new clinical practices and new specialties, it costs an awful lot of money. Two years ago or thereabouts, Community Health made a proposal. It included Tallahassee Memorial. At that time, there were no definables, and no objectives, and no way to measure Tallahassee Memorial's role in the agreement. Tallahassee Memorial has had an agreement with the hospital for years and years. So for Alliant to come in and say, "Now, they have an agreement," it needs to be defined and measurable. If it exists, it should be presented. The stats are as the stats are, and they don't tell a story that's inaccurate. Ninety-one percent of the people in this county that need hospitalization leave the county for that care. Forty percent of the people that seek care at Weems are tourists. The fact is, Weems is not a medical surgical hospital, as has been claimed. There's not a functioning licensed operating room at Weems. There are not surgeries being performed at Weems. Are there emergency procedures in the emergency room? Yes, but it is not a medical, medical surgical hospital. Sacred Heart is proposing to run an ER with observation beds. Weems has an ER with observation beds, and then they have an inpatient unit. The inpatient acute care unit averages one patient a day. One patient a day. The others are being transferred out of the county or left the county on their own. Let me see if I can put a little frame around this critical access hospital myth that has been created right here in Franklin County. Yes, you are licensed as a critical access hospital. Yes, it would make a difference in the operation of Port St. Joe's individual numbers. But what hadn't been said is that Port St. Joe is owned by the second-largest hospital country, hospital company in the United States. They've got the wherewithal to support, and it is critical to their Catholic mission to expand into rural healthcare areas. Critical access. If Weems closed, Port St. Joe would be required to apply for critical access designation. There's no guarantee they would get it. But ladies and gentlemen, if you build a new replacement hospital, look to the Medicare guidelines, and there's about 170,000 pages of them. Look at the critical access designation requirements. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no guarantee that Weems will have it again, because it's Weems. Just because you think of it as a replacement facility, it will be licensed as a new hospital, and you will be required to reapply for critical access designation. And guess what? One of the biggest requirements for critical access is that you're not within 25 miles of an existing hospital. Do the mileage from here, from Weems to Port St. Joe. So unless you plan on relocating it where it's a minimum of 25 miles from Port St. Joe's hospital, and then you finance it, and then you apply, then you'll see whether or not you get critical access. But this automatic guarantee business that people keep thinking, and to think that critical access funding is the be-all, the end-all, and is the gold bell that needs to be rung, is just highly inaccurate, and the future is inaccurate to predict that it will go on. One last point, and I'll sit down. You see, I know how Medicare works, I know how hospitals work, I know that when you're deficient even in meeting state guidelines for sterilization in the hospital, that there are bigger problems in the hospital, and in May you had that problem. But look to the Medicare guidelines, look to what is being proposed before you spend $14,000 or $10,000 building a new hospital with no new equipment. Look to what Medicare is proposing today. You have to look into the future with Medicare. Right now, you average one patient a day. Medicare is considering implementing a new quality standard, because they understand at Medicare, the clinical outcomes vary based on volume. Low volumes tend to mean lower outcomes, not in all cases, but tend to mean that statistically. Medicare is considering saying, to have a critical access designation, you must have three impatients a day. You can have all the swing beds you want, ladies and gentlemen. Swing beds are not impatient beds. You have one.
I'm Dorothy Blesz from Lenart Village. I'm not qualified to state any figures and amounts of that. I'm just qualified for Lenart Village, leads us the face to get our people from the center of the county to the Weems and get them to Tallahassee one. We need the coverage due to the helipad that's there, the emergency trucks, vans come in at least one a week, and taking people flying them out somewhere, because they cannot drive or get there fast enough to save them. So we just need to have the assistance for our people to get medication. Thank you.
Oh, jump up one time.
My name is Amanda Burns, and I do all for sale at Weems Memorial, and also have the pleasure of doing marketing as well. I've been an employee there since February, and I had the pleasure of being able to get to know these employees, employees that worked there for 30 and 40 years without any 401K. They work tirelessly, they are dedicated, they take care of their patients, they work their toes off to do whatever they can to make sure that patients' needs are met 100% or 150%. Sacred Heart, they're talking about coming in and what, cutting 60%? If you talk about laying off 60% of the local people, who's going to suffer? Grocery stores, tax, people are going to have to move. It's going to, it's going to be a vicious cycle of what it's going to do in this community. We need Weems to stay here, we need, um, the support of y'all for Weems. I have the pleasure and I'm honored to say I was born in that hospital. It looks to me, based on these numbers, Sacred Heart needs us, we certainly don't need them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Heather Wells, I'm family medicine, I work for Sacred Heart, I live here in this community. My husband and I moved here because we grew up over in Destin, and it got way too big for us, and we liked this kind of community. But we came here because we wanted to help take care of everybody here, and hopefully you guys agree to have Sacred Heart come over here, that's what we'll be able to do. Some of my patients already drive to Port St. Joe where I work, but not all of them can, so I'd love to be able to be in this community, take care of them here. And if there's questions that people have about what Sacred Heart can do for you guys or help, um, I'm happy to answer those kind of questions. We do have a lot of specialties, specialties in Port St. Joe, we don't get everything out of Panama City. We let people choose where they want to go, if they want to go to TMH, if they want to go to Panama City, or Marianna even, it just depends on where they want to go and where they live. I have people that come to me from Carabel, and so it'd be a lot easier for them to come here instead of coming all the way to Port St. Joe just to see me. Um, there are, it's very true that, that the hospital here has saved many, many lives, and it's the ER services that have done that. And we're not going to take that away, we, we want to make it better, we want to help and maybe employ people that are, that are sorry to say, working. And hopefully they all are, hopefully if there's someone who needs a little training to do that. And we want to have, I would love to see a few observation beds too, when we meet people overnight. If it's true, people can't-
Hey, hear you, ma.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I would love to see more observation beds too, because I would like to see people here in the community, if we can, and so they don't have to have their family drive them other places, or family come see them other places. But if, you know, if we can't do that, there is transportation services in this county, like in every other county, that can help with that, if we have to get them out. We don't worry as much at Sacred Heart about the bottom line, because we are a charitable organization. They understand that some of the smaller places aren't going to make money every year, and they're okay with that, because we are here to take care of people who can't take care of themselves. There's been some talk about worrying about that we're a Catholic organization, and I'm happy to address anybody's concerns about that. We take care of everybody on the same level, no matter where they come from or what their religious background is. I'm not Catholic in nature, but I love working for them, because at least there's still a religious background for me. I just, we, we live here, and we want to be completely a part of this community, and not just the doctor who lives here who works in the other county. I want to live and work in this county. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Williams. I want to know, let you know, I was born and raised in Apalachico all my life. And Weems Hospital has been the only hospital I know in Apalachico. And we need, what is the new hospital? Can it have all the stuff that they say is missing in Sacred Heart? Why would you like Sacred Heart come in and take over where it's been thriving? Maybe you're going to make some ups and downs, but you don't need to take the hospital away from us. This is all we know right here. I mean, who can ride, who can ride? I was born in 1966. How many of you say are born and raised in Appalachia? Now, hospital was a lifesaver for me. If there's not some kind of other financial gain or some other type of gain. We need to keep our hospital right here for other people so we have access to it. All this other stuff that's going on, let that be up to the board, but get the citizens what they want. And I think the citizens would approve our hospital right here the way it's there. And thank you.
Eric? Everybody else got anything to say? Just a minute.
Good evening. My name is Doris Carmichael. I'm the provider at East Point Medical Center over at East Point. It's part of North Florida Medical Center out of Tallahassee. I've been here for about nine years. I married a native, born at Weems. He followed me back to Georgia about 30 years ago, and so we've been here about nine years. Most everybody here knows me, I believe, and knows I'm pretty blunt. I've worked at both facilities. I applied and came here working for Sacred Heart. Worked there for at least two years before the office opened here in Appalachia, the Sacred Heart office. I was there with Dr. Bob Head, Robert Head, before he left. Now, I can tell you, in Georgia, I've been in healthcare for about 30 years, yeah, and so a long time. A long time. And I can tell you, the last 15 years before I came here, my primary job was Dean of, at Bangor State College over allied health and nursing. So I had RN, LPN, paramedic, EMT, CNA, medical assisting, you know, I had all these students that are meant. And you know, we teach them in the book, when you're testing, it's not real life. You have all the time in the world to take care of this patient. You have all the time in the world to make these decisions. And I must say, out of all the five blah 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 years, Sacred Heart was the only facility I've ever worked at that that's where it worked. I can say that. Their mission is to care for the poor and the needy. And they have a lot of backup. They have all these bigger hospitals that can do this. Now, saying that, I also worked at Weems for several years, and I worked with some fabulous nurses at Weems. It's not the quality of care, I think, that anybody would argue with. It's the resources, and it's what you have to work with. It's the facility, it's the space. I know if I was going in the hospital, and my family has been admitted to Weems, we've used the ER, I've used the ER. I use Weems Clinic as my primary care. Love Suzette, you know, love Betty Fugate, wonderful. And I encourage my patients, I work for them. I work for the people in this community as a provider. They tell me where you want to go. You know, do you want to go to Weems? Do you want to go to Sacred? Wherever they want to go, Tallahassee, wherever they want to go to spend their money, because they could choose another provider, just like they choose another musician, another grocery store. You don't like the adjuvant, go to the pig. You know, we are consumer driven, and customer service is what we need to do. They pay me for my professional opinion. And it's really a facility issue. Now, I have to say, I didn't, I was not here for the other presentations. I did not hear what's, you know, what each is offering. I can only speak from my knowledge from working at both facilities. I don't think it's the staff that's an issue at all. But you know, Weems has been hanging on year after year after year. I know we've been doing taxes. This tax thing says, I've been here for nine years. Now, I can tell you, the last CEO, the last three CEOs, y'all been through about five since I've been here nine years. The last three have come to see me. What do you need? And I'm very blunt. I mean, y'all, I'm very blunt. I tell them, this is what I need for my patients. The last one was wonderful. Amanda Ultrasound, where'd she go? Fabulous. Haven't seen her face, but talked to her a million times. X-ray, genius X-ray, fabulous. Even if I send something, they're like, okay, now wait, what you looking for? They called me and asked. We are all about the patient. Sacred Heart, same way. Another thing I want to mention is, somebody mentioned about, you know, poor and needy, the population we serve here. I have a sliding scale in my office, so depending on your income, you may pay $10. If you qualify for my sliding scale, I pay for labs, you know, but it's federal funding that we have that does that. I've had patients, though, with no insurance, who needed a surgery. I write a letter to the board at Sacred Heart. This patient needs this and this. I can tell you, thousands of dollars, they've approved my patients that live here in Franklin for surgeries. Mamogram, the fundraising we do there pays for mammograms over there. That's a service we don't offer here.
Marv and Tom.
All right, both are still in.
I've been coming down to this part of the world since 2000. My background is RN. I was a nurse since 1975. I came from the University Hospital Vanderbilt, where in 2005, we were tasked with looking outside the box, trying to figure out how we could serve Southern Kentucky and all the areas that were being, you know, pulled into Vanderbilt for the trauma there. We, you know, ended up, you know, really looking past what we had always done in the future, and it's working now, that it's 12, 14 years later. I've been coming here, and you know, every year, I just hear more negative and more negative about healthcare here in the county. Not as far as, you know, saving people, I think that you've done a good job. I don't, I'm not questioning that. But we've been dealing with, since 2007, trying to get something to change here. And I'm begging you to just look beyond what we've always done in the past and try to, you know, move on to accepting the proposal from Sacred Heart that really looks good because you need more primary care doctors here. You really need more of your preventative care here. And when I look at the proposal, I see that they're thinking about sending, you know, some of your specialists over here just once a week or, you know, every other week. And those are the kinds of things you can do. You can take care of the emergency needs and then be able to refer people to stay in the community itself and then see these other specialties. Thank you.
Eric?
Good evening. Alan Pfeifer, Concerned Citizens, Franklin County. There's no taking away from all the good that's happened at Weems through the years. We know many people there, a lot of good people. That's not the issue. It's resources and demographics. For the benefit of the audience and to remind Hospital Board members, the Weems Hospital Board, like all boards in Franklin County, is advisory in nature and cannot independently make major decisions. As a watcher of this board for about 15 years, I can state that in general, they're caring and want to do the right thing. The question before you is, what is the right thing? Is the gun to filter out that the Hospital Board is not happy with either of the two proposals on the table, and in light of that belief, Weems is doing, in light of a belief that Weems is doing better financially, the board feels emboldened? Weems is reporting a profit for the last fiscal year of $750,000. This is demonstrably false and misleading. And if your good cheer and newfound optimism are based on a lie, then we are all in trouble. There were two financial statement entries, one in July and one in September. There were non-cash adjustments that were, in our opinion, made to obscure the real numbers, which are depressingly consistent otherwise. The entry in July of 2019 was a change in how money was reserved for bad debt. Gross revenues were listed as $1,003,000 and change, and net patient revenues were listed as $1,600,000. In the old system, those revenues would have been reduced by a deduction of 45% for assumed bad debt. This would have reduced net revenues to around $880,000. Instead, net revenues were listed $720,000 higher than they would have been under the methodology used in the prior month. This is strictly a financial adjustment. Notes in the accompanying financial statements do not reflect why, but in speaking with CEO David Walker, I understand that you believed you were being too conservative in your write-offs. We don't see that, and we'd like to see the required written justification to support this move, and if true, which we doubt, spread those adjustments in the restake income for each period affected and not dumped into a single month to fluff up the end of the year numbers as normally required by generally accepted accounting practices. The September adjustment is even more problematic. The County Commission recently ordered the outstanding loan of $690,000 to Weems to be written off as uncollectible. The $690,000 is then dropped into the income statement as a cash subsidy, again, without footnotes or justification. Keep in mind, no money changed hands, there was no cash income. This is totally misleading regardless of the justification. The combination of the $720,000 and $690,000 special adjustments is $1,410,000, which takes the stated profit of $1,203,000 to a loss of $207,000 after additional subsidies of about $2 million for the last fiscal year. Weems continues to hemorrhage money each month. This kind of error makes us question the oversight of the Hospital Board. In the many meetings of the full Hospital Board we have attended, there is virtually no discussion of detailed finances. I question whether the board is aware of the continuing losses and their reliance on inaccurate data to make profound decisions. We have spent considerable time and resources analyzing Weems' proposed construction of a renovated plus addition. At this late date, and after spending over $1,500,000 on design and other studies, no one knows how much it will cost to build, but it will be more than the original $10 million allocated. The Weems architects have projected, under various scenarios, additional costs of $12.5 to $17 million more. However, in the end, the renovated plus additions will still be without the additional services, high-tech equipment, doctors, and much, much more that are on the table now by Sacred Heart.
Eric?
You're missing eight essential services of the full service hospital. You're really an emergency right now.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Lopez. I'm the mayor of Carabel, Florida. I want you to know, I have used Weems Hospital several times before I was able to move here full-time and after I've been here full-time. I've used emergency services, there's specialty services. My family has used Weems. I've received excellent treatment, tender loving care, fine services. I have nothing but good to say about the employees at Weems. This is not directed towards the employees of Weems Hospital. Earlier in this discussion this evening, a lady came forward, and she's talking about in this community of Appalachia Cola, that they have citizens that walk and bike to the facility. I want to remind you that throughout Franklin County, we have citizens who walk and bike to facilities, to the East Point Medical Center, to the Health Department in Carabel on Fifth Street, to the Weems Clinic on Fifth Street in Carabel, to the grocery stores. And this is in Appalachia Cola, Carabel, East Point, and Lanark. We have needy citizens like that throughout the county. We need, in my opinion, a facility that's centrally located. If you're going to build a new facility, something that is centrally located. Our Sheriff's Department is centrally located. The County Commission is working desperately to get the Franklin County Emergency Management Center centrally located. Put a new facility in East Point where our most needy are in East Point. They need something that they can walk and bike to, or that their families can take them to. The alliance proposal isn't perfect. Your Sacred Heart proposal isn't perfect. They need the both, either or, or maybe you need to look at something else. I can't tell you. I can't really comment on the statistics. I have not had the opportunity to attend one of your board meetings, but they should include an ambulance and a lifeline component. I'm urging you to rethink it, give it strong consideration of putting a facility centrally located. The city of Carabel, I'm here because we are intimately involved. We need, as does Lanark, and I'll speak for Lanark, we service them with water and sewer, we need a facility that's closer. We don't necessarily want to have to go to Tallahassee for services, emergency services or specialty services. We would prefer to go someplace closer like East Point and spend our money here in East Point and support our workers in East Point if we could get to a facility that's closer. We are intimately involved in Carabel because 1%, as you all know, of our sales tax goes to support the Weems Hospital system and ambulance system. So that's why I am here, to let you know that we know we're intimately involved, and we would like a new facility. We know you need one. And now, I'm going to go out on a limb here. I don't usually, but I am. I'm going to go back to the Franklin County Board of County Commission meeting of July 3, 2017, where discussions were very similar to this, but in that meeting, the two commissioners talked about that the County Commission needed to get out of the business of running a hospital. And that's what I suggest. The county commission just need to get out of the business of running a hospital. And I can speak from personal experience that merely because you're an elected official does not give the person, the elected official, the expertise and the skills to direct the operations of a hospital and a medical facility. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for hearing me, and I look forward to attending one of your meetings and meeting all of you. I know only, I know three of you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Math Borland. I've lived in Appalachia Cola for four years. I'm a retired critical care RN, and I just wonder if we would be better served if we had an emergency trauma center centrally located in the county, if we had more ambulances like Dana just mentioned. I know that a few months ago, we had an emergency at Trinity Episcopal, and the ambulance was there on a Sunday morning. At the same time, there was a man in his 40s, I believe, maybe 50 years old, St. George Island, who had a heart attack. He had to wait 45 minutes for an ambulance to come from Lanark. So I just think that we would be better served if we had more ambulances and EMTs and perhaps even a helicopter, a lifeline helicopter, instead of duplicating services that we could get elsewhere. Thank you.
I'm Kevin Vegas. I'm the mayor of Appalachia Cola. I'd just like to mention that the situation we have is voters approved a referendum many years ago for rebuilding a hospital in Appalachia Cola. Our board, our commission will be meeting on this issue in coming weeks and months. I'm not going to discuss either of the two options, but what voters approved is not moving something to East Point or somewhere else. If someone wants to do a new referendum or come up with millions of dollars in another way, that's a different place to start, but I believe whatever is done needs to stay in Appalachia Cola. At the same time, there was a man in his 40s, I believe, maybe 50 years old, St. George Island, who had a heart attack. He had to wait 45 minutes for an ambulance to come from Landarch. So I just think that we would be better served if we had more ambulances and EMTs and perhaps even a helicopter, a lightsight helicopter, instead of duplicating services that we could get elsewhere. Thank you.
I'm the mayor of Appalachia Cola. I'd just like to mention that the situation we have is voters approved a referendum many years ago for rebuilding a hospital in Appalachia Cola. Our board, our commission will be meeting on this issue in coming weeks and months. I'm not going to discuss either of the two options. But what voters approve is not moving something to East Point or somewhere else. If someone wants to do a new referendum or come up with millions of dollars in another way, that's a different place to start. But I believe whatever is done needs to stay in Appalachia Cola.
Hi, my name is Gail Riegelmeier and I've owned our home since 2000. So my husband and I have been here for 19 years. I've analyzed both, if I understand, our purpose tonight was to decide or give our opinions between two proposals, the Sacred Heart and the Alliant proposal. However, I was totally thrown off by a comparison provided by this board that has Tallahassee Memorial front and center on here comparing it with the current hospital. This is completely disingenuous. How can you, we've been in partnership supposedly with TMH for many, many years and I have never seen these, these services offered. And when I was there at the Alliant proposal, TMH was nowhere in the room. So there, they, as far as I know, from the proposal with Alliant, TMH is out of the picture. I had analyzed both of the two proposals between Sacred Heart and Alliant and I, I'm the one I think you all took the idea from, because people on that board have gotten my emails. And I did a side-by-side comparison between the two proposals. And I'm not going to read through this because I know I only have a certain limited amount of time, but the bottom line is that Sacred Heart is bringing in or willing to sign a 20-year lease. Franklin County will build a new ER. Many of the comments before me is portraying it like it's, everything's going to go away. The facts are, if you read the proposals, is that there's going to be an ER. The county will build a new ER if it accepts Sacred Heart's proposal. So we'll have a brand-new building. It's called a wraparound, where there'll be doctor's offices associated with it, equipment, variety of doctor services. The Alliant proposal offers no guarantees. The Sacred Heart proposal, they're going to bring in $2.7 million and stay current with standardized equipment. They'll equip the new ER with furniture and so forth. So when you do the, and I urge everybody to look at the facts. Go online to the Weems Hospital Board site and look at the two proposals. It's there, black and white. And the Alliant people are going to suck money from the county to the tune of over five years, $1.8 million in consulting fees, no doctors, no equipment, no guarantees, no risks. The county will continue to have all the risks and all the costs and it's unsustainable. But I also want to point out, the things I've heard tonight, is I want to echo what was said, is that currently Weems is functioning as an ER. Sacred Heart is suggesting keep the ER model, move it, I mean, build a new one and let them run it for you. That means that they'll have all the expertise, the critical designation, Mr. Robinson explained that, everybody's all up in arms about losing the critical designation, critical access designation. That's not guaranteed to Weems, it's not guaranteed to Sacred Heart. Everybody's worried about transportation. As Dr. Heather had mentioned, there's already transportation to and for from Sacred, I mean, Port St. George. I've heard concerns about it being a Catholic organization. It's not, the president of the hospital is a Baptist. They hire people of all faiths. Religion is not part of their, their healthcare. I heard Sacred Heart will take jobs. Well, folks, if Sacred Heart comes in, they're going to need doctors, they're going to need nurses, they're going to need people to run their equipment, they're going to need people in the emergency room. Not only are they going to provide these jobs, they're going to give the training necessary to stay current with the latest technology. They're going to invest in the employees, they're going to have better benefits for the employees. Now, if you look at both proposals, the Sacred Heart and the Alliant proposals, you will see both of them said with a one census per night, it's unsustainable. We have too many employees for the number of patients in the bed at night. And it's not disparaging the employees, it's just a financial business decision. And both proposals say we're going to have to scale back. But I will tell you what's-
Everybody in here for the Sacred Heart proposal, please stand up. Thank you.
How many y'all work for Schleicher Hall?
One.
One.
How many work for-
How many work for-
Good evening. My name is Diane Brewer. I'm a resident of Appalachia Cola for the past five years and I've owned property here for 20 years. And I have been to both Weems and Sacred Heart in Port St. George as a patient. This, everything that we're hearing and are here for the purpose of tonight is to, for the future. This has, this is not to take anything away from the stellar past that, that Weems Hospital has had, but this is about the future. The condition of the industry has been reported by the Wall Street Journal in an article called "What the Hospital of the Future Looks Like" in 2000. It's, it's an article of 2018, says that hospitals will be smaller. They will be, have a lot more equipment, a lot more technology, and they will be stabilization centers with ER and beds that where patients can then be transported to some, a larger facility and provided the ultimate care they need. So what, before you consider this proposal from each, Alliant is going to manage something that is not going to be successful because it's an old model and you'll spend $12 million plus to build a new model that they would then manage. And you'll be in the hole, or millions of, not you, we all will be in the hole for 40 years for the obligation to pay for something that is never going to be made current. It is an old outdated model. Sacred Heart is coming in with a proposal that gives the condition of the industry and provides the services for the future. One lady, I heard her say tonight, that Sacred Heart's proposal will not provide ER services, and I heard this somewhere else. That is patently wrong. Sacred Heart's proposal doesn't include ER services. Thank you.
My name is Lisa West and I'm new to the area. Actually have moved from Tennessee as a nurse practitioner up there. I've worked in pediatrics. It's difficult to get pediatric specialties anywhere. I've worked for the 19 years of my career in Tennessee in rural areas. I've worked in central Tennessee where the Vanderbilt model was established and it seems to me like it's very much like the Sacred Heart model to bring specialties here once a week. It was a life God sent for the families and parents of my patients not to have to drive 50 miles out of the community and out of the county to get care. I just hope you'll consider the Sacred Heart proposal.
I also happen to be a member of the city commission in Appalachia Cola. I would just like to remind everyone that is in favor of accepting the ascension Sacred Heart proposal, you do not have funding guaranteed to build that emergency facility that they're talking about. The interlocal agreement that was agreed upon in 2012 by Appalachia Cola, Carrabelle, and every little city within Franklin County agreed to have Phase 1 of that project with the sales tax funding to build the facility in Carrabelle. And then Phase 2 of that program was to build a hospital in Appalachia Cola. If we are not going with that contractual obligation, we have to go back to the drawing board and the money is already there and held up for that. I'd also like to remind everyone that the hospital provides an economic boom for the county. It brings in more professionals, it brings in young families, and considering that most vulnerable members of our community are the elderly and the young, we need to be providing care for them first. So I hope that we all keep that in mind. And when we come back to the drawing board with either of these proposals, I hope we do do some negotiating on them to get a better deal for the people in our county. That includes EMS service. I know that some of you may not be aware, but we did lose a young member of our community this past week. And I like to think that if we would have had some better care available in the emergence, I'm sorry, the emergency standpoint for that, she might still be here with us today. Thank you.
What's the board's plan for the next several weeks in terms, you're going to come up with a recommendation and deliver it to the-
Then what we, we're going to look at all the information we have available. This board is going to come to a decision and make a recommendation to the county commission. And they can either accept it or reject it.
You have a date line?
I do not, because we don't have all our information yet. We're still receiving information. And when we reach the point that we're comfortable making a recommendation to the county commission, we'll either address that at a regular meeting or I'll call a special meeting where it'll be addressed and we'll move forward from there.
I just want to say that, you know, it's a great testament in our city, in our county, that, excuse me, I'm David Walker, interim CEO at Weems. I've been on the job three months now, 91 days. And, you know, even when I got this job, I had a lot of false perceptions of Weems Memorial Hospital. But I just want to thank the citizens here. You know, we're, we're a part of this county. Like the gentleman said early on, you know, we, we may disagree, but we can agree to disagree. We all want the best for the community. And so I just want to applaud you all for coming out. You know, I'm a local citizen here, I'm a community leader, especially in the African-American community. So, you know, healthcare is very, dear to my heart, being a local pastor as well. But we all want the best for our community. So I just want to thank you all. You know, we may not agree, but we still want the best for Franklin County. So just thank you all for coming and letting the hospital board hear your concerns. I mean, that's what it's all about, hearing your concerns. We heard it, we hear your concerns. I'm, I'm just navigating the ship that the hospital board is here. And so they have heard you tonight and they, they steady, we're steady getting information as well. But just thank you for voicing your concerns. I mean, that's what it's all about. I mean, you have a right to voice your concerns for the healthcare in Franklin County. You're a citizen, we have a sales tax, but every, every time you buy something in this city, in this county, you know, that sales tax helps support the hospital. The EMS system of our hospital, you know, our property taxes pay for that. You know, but no property tax paid for the hospital operations as itself. So, but you have a right to voice your concerns and give us your input of the hospital. You know, so I just want to thank you all for doing that and you all have a great evening.
I'm just going to conclude this public appearance. All have a good evening.